It's July eighth, two thousand twenty-five, and we're in the Addison Township Hall. Could I ask Secretary to call roll?
Yep. Chair King.
Here.
Vice Chair Benz, absent. Secretary Lundee here. Derek Musgrave.
Here.
Jenny Eller.
Here.
Mark Smith.
Here.
Linda Garrick is on the roll call, but she has sent in a letter of resignation effective immediately, so.
And if I could ask everyone to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do they have any correspondence? I'd like to, if everyone's comfortable with the agenda, could I get a motion to accept it?
A motion.
Support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the next item of business, approval of the May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting minutes. Does anyone have any comments on the minutes? All in favor say aye. Onto the second item, solar ordinance review. We've had a couple versions of drafts of a solar ordinance to review to give us an idea for what we may want to have or not have in our own ordinance. I went through them a couple of times, sort of just trying to discern some of the differences between them.
They're very similar.
They're very similar. I do see that in the first one, we have requirement for an application.
Yes.
Which probably a good idea, in my opinion, but I'm curious whether anyone else has any.
So, and to explain that really quick, not to.
Sure.
Not to go too far ahead. I put that in under the zoning compliance standards that are currently in the Addison Township zoning ordinance. So this reflected, was reflective, sort of your process now. And where you're going to find the other similarities is, one, these are ordinances that were drafted for two different township communities in mind. So they each had their own little things that they wanted on their own. But some of those things, as you've noticed in this, those similarities have carried over. It might be five foot in one, it might be six foot in the other, it might be fourteen foot in one, sixteen feet in the other. That's what I want to figure out tonight, is what do those numbers look like? And, and, yes, so that application piece, Pauline and I have both discussed this version. This is a version that we like better. There's just a few things that I wanted to be able to talk to you about to tweak it. The version that's not on our letterhead is just another example, but I think this is probably a more complete version.
I would agree, after having read the two of them. Besides the application, we've got, there's a, we have a year, and you have requirement for a sketch plan, horizontal and vertical elevation drawings. But we're not looking for professional drawings, or?
So the drawing would be an administrative review. At a minimum, these are the items that we would need to see for the building inspector to be able to issue a building permit, to understand that they're going to be, you know, assembled to the manufacturer's specification. We would want to see from the zoning side that the set packs are adhered to. What I call it a sketch plan, no for zoning purposes for the zoning compliance permit. I'm not going to need a stamped engineer or architect on that plan. When it comes to construction plans pulling building permits, we're going to want something that is, you know, considered engineered or building plan-specific requirements.
That's for the on-structure.
On-structure, for structural load capacity, make sure that that's all the manufacturer respects. So those will be site and seat, I'm sure. And then again, for the ground-mounted systems.
So this.
Being able to show us, you know, the setbacks and making sure that the proper yard calculations are met for percentage of coverage, which is one of the numbers I have highlighted tonight, first to discuss.
One of the things that I was wondering about, in the second version without the stationary on it, a couple of things that are not in it, that I don't think I saw in here is, as far as like removing any abandoned solar items that might be.
Okay.
Other, if there was something.
It might be difficult to determine abandonment in that situation, because most of these solar systems are just solely for the purpose of the property that they're serving. And so now if there are lighted structures, broken structures, or structures in disrepair, then we should probably have a means of doing, you know, addressing that, but that might already be addressed in our other ordinances for nuisances and blight and that sort of stuff for dangerous structures.
The other question I had is, in the first version, when it talks about extenuating circumstances, if you can't put up, you know, use the backyard or the side yard, and that the planning commission would have the authority to approve a location in the front yard, is that the planning commission that would have the authority?
That's, as it's written, for the community that I prepared this for. That's what they wanted to do, because they wanted, they wanted to save somebody the effort from having to go to the ZBA for a public hearing at a variance. If it was a matter of, okay, this side yard's not going to work, the rear yard's not going to work, but the front yard could work as long as it's absolutely no way in the front yard setup, the required setback. So the planning permission wanted to be able to leave it in the hands of the zoning and building administrator. But if there's not an option, then the planning commission can make that choice. And in most communities, that would be typically determined by the ZBA. And in this case, this provision probably might not even have to be written that way if it's for the ZBA, because then that variance provision is for all yards, you know? So if, if it can't work, if the backyard is an accessory structure, this gives planning commission the ability to figure it out a different way without having to go to a variance for everything.
Okay.
But that was another thing that we discussed, yeah?
I'm kind of what down that road too, Jenny. My concern is, is we don't have applications for the planning commission to review. We don't have set standards for a variance. It's all geared with planning and zoning where they would naturally go to the zoning board of appeal. So I picked up on that too, and I had a concern is, how are we going to do that as a planning commission versus letting them go to the zoning board of appeals, just like every other type of use?
Right.
I thought we had a default that if you want to build in your front yard, you have to go through the long process.
Zoning board of appeals. Everything in the zoning laws are, if you need a variance, you go to the zoning board of appeals. Whereas Justin was saying this community opted to do it differently for this provision. In my mind, it's confusing, and we, the township administrator, we're not even set up for an application of this sort. So it would definitely take some work if you guys go down that road versus the zoning board of appeals is already set up. That's their job, is to get variance for setbacks.
And I, I think that works. The only other place that I've seen instances like this, which is, for lack of a better word, let's call it a waiver. You can grant a waiver through the planning unit of development, which we just eliminated. But you can't grant a waiver at the planning commission level, which would, for all intents and purposes otherwise, be called a variance, that would go to the ZBA. That's why this community wanted to do that, because they liked that process, and they have set up standards for review of a waiver. But again, you're not that community. This is for you, and what works for you. And so I'm, I'm very comfortable changing that around and saying, if you can't meet your setback requirements, front, right, front side or rear, you're going to go for a variance. You'll just have to demonstrate that the regulations unnecessarily burden some, or you're having undue hardships, it's not self-created.
Yeah, the ZBA makes a lot more sense to me.
Okay. Whatever you hear on the homeowner rate.
One, one difference I noted between the two, and I thought we could discuss, was the, the letterhead version, the roof mounts can't be five feet above the highest point of the roof, and the other one is original, a peak of the roof is what the limit is. Extend beyond the peak of the roof. All the roof-mounted ones I've ever seen, I've never seen one extend past the peak. Maybe I've paid a lot of attention.
So, in some of these, when it's considered roof-mounted, it's taking into account not only pitched roofing for residential, but also building roofing, if it's a, if it's a commercial space. And so the, the extension is how far above the building.
Uh-huh, okay.
Not necessarily above the peak. So the roof-mounted are going to be flat.
Yeah.
They're going to, you know, the building-mounted, they could, you know, mount them tilted angled on the, on the building. They're not going to be flat on the top of a building, if you think of Walmart.
Yeah.
They're going to be angled like this all the way along, to get the peak sun angle. It's that measurement from the peak of the.
Okay.
The system, the panel, and the elevation of the roof face, that we don't want to extend above a certain height.
That makes sense.
I have a similar question along the same parameter. Was that determined for structural engineering purposes or for aesthetics?
Aesthetics. Yeah, yeah. People are kind of used to seeing roof-mounted solar on residential properties. They're not used to seeing roof-mounted or building-mounted for commercial and industrial properties, and they're really not used to seeing, unless you live out on some of these farms, areas that have the big systems, ground-mounted systems, for residential properties. But it's becoming more and more common, specifically, a great example, Generac, generators, and Tesla, both now have a garage-installed battery whole-house backup system that is powered by ground-mounted solar. And, and so it's, instead of having the big diesel generator outside for your house, it's just right in your garage, and it's a big battery, and it's right on your wall, and it's powered by the solar. So that, those are becoming more and more popular these days for people, instead of doing the fuel-based home generation systems, power generation system, so. It's just, we're trying to cover all the bases here. We know we haven't got it all right, probably, because it's such a new industry, other than that people have been doing roof-mounted for ages, but, and just thinking about it from the perspective of accessory, not for utility production. That's, it's just a different way of thinking about it.
For the, the commercial versions, that's specifically like flat roofs, right? Not just because they're a commercial building? Meaning, at what point do we start classifying what a business is versus?
Well, so, so the way we have it here is that it would be an accessory system in all districts, and the, the dimensional standards will apply in all districts. And so the percentages, the, of area, the heights, all that sort of stuff. This, this is township-wide, so we're not really going to try to decide for if it's, you know, if it's a commercial business, that's like me, where I'm operating out of my house, or, you know, a Walmart, or the party store, the restaurant down the street. You know, they would all be commercial businesses. It would be up to them to show, if they wanted to go to one of these systems, that they met the standards that we are putting in place.
You know, a lot of homesteads are, they sell stuff where they have big refrigeration units and stuff in their pole barns.
Yeah.
And they have solar systems, so would that be a, a commercial product, or would that just be a residential?
The only time it becomes a commercial product is if they're producing the power onsite to put into the utility grid. As long as they're using that accessory solar generation for the purposes of providing onsite either backup or onsite primary, meaning they want to be off the grid, or up to the point where they're net metering and they're returning back to the grid. But the sole purpose is not to generate the power just for the purposes of going to the commercial grid. Those systems are not going to be allowed, right? So if somebody has twenty acres, you know, I don't know what the full megawattage is per acre, but twenty acres, if they wanted to do fifteen of that in solar, is not a residential.
No.
You know, capacity, we'd probably be talking about NRA.
I can't cover my entire pond. I have a terrible pond.
No, we, we, we would, we would strictly prohibit anybody from using solar for commercial purposes beyond, up and above and beyond their own.
I guess I was thinking in terms of commercial use, like, for instance, the gas station. If they wanted to put a solar array on their roof for using, to support their operations, not that they're going to use that to make money off of.
Yeah, no, if they, if they wanted to put it on the top of their canopy to, and it was a flat-mounted system, and it was tied directly into their, either powering their pumps or putting power into their building to help them get off the grid, we're totally good with that.
That's a pure, perfect example of commercial, the, the greatness is, I guess, I just don't want to get concerned with people driving around and pointing out, hey, this person's selling beef and stuff, so they're a business, therefore they need to follow the business rules of this versus a residential rules, even though they're supporting their own operations.
That's right, and, and so this is, this ordinance here, similar to how we have, I've got the section pulled up on my computer. The section on accessory structures, so it's four twenty-one of the zoning ordinance. How we say we're zoning where accessory structures uses can be located, that's exactly what we're doing here. We're not looking at it by the use, we're looking at it by where it can be located. If it means the specifics.
Can you go, yeah, go back to, okay, based on flat roof versus big roof?
Yeah.
Does anyone else on the board have any questions they'd like to bring up regarding the draft letterhead ZB, solar ordinance?
I have a couple, pardon my, the second paragraph talks about the building inspector in many places. I don't think, recently when I've been up here to put in an application, it's done with the building inspector, it's done with the building department. But I would like to suggest that that.
This, this language is directly out of the ordinance?
Our ordinance.
Yes.
Mark, you like to fly to the building department, but it's the building official or inspector that's going to be approving it? So that's why that ordinance is where it can be made that fashion. Yes, it came directly from an ordinance that we just defended, so that zoning compliance permits would be reviewed by the planner and the building official.
Well, it, it says that an application seeking installation shall be made to the building inspector. You don't make an application to the building, you make with the building department. Oh, I'm being very technical, I suppose, and I apologize, but that's just something that struck me, and, and it, you know, I realize it's the building official that's going to read it, but if you put building department, it could be anyone in that department, and you're not tying yourself down to one person in that department if they have to be out or not. I don't know, it's just, I'm looking for some flexibility, but maintaining the integrity of that paragraph. So that was just something that I wanted to raise. Additionally.
Mark, can you back up just for, so how would you, how would you change that?
I would replace building inspector everywhere it appears in that with building department.
Would you leave one of them where it said the, or in addition to one of the sentences that upon approval of the building inspector?
Yeah.
It would have to, it would have to be, you could change it in that first sentence if the township wanted, by saying the building department, but the very next sentence is, that the building inspector shall have the authority to grant building permits in zoning compliance after recommendation from the planner. So that's a very specific position as opposed to the department.
Is the inspector the same thing as the building official?
There's two different people currently. Typically, there is only one person currently, we have two. But if we change this, the board also has to agree to, to change what they just modified. So building department is a team, just like the clerk's department, but certain aspects can only be approved by the official, so we really put down the building inspector for a purpose.
And I'd say we're not doing the way it's written right now. I mean, that's what I, I thought I heard you say, there's two different people. Is there a building official and a building inspector? And is the official approving permits, or is the inspector approving permits? Is the inspector doing onsite inspections, and the officials approving the permits?
Inspector approves the permits, and the official approves his own compliance application. So they kind of duplicate the job up, but we're covered under, under that. But if we go department, I don't, I don't know where that's going to go.
Again, I mean, I would be too detailed, and I just wanted to ask the question. Find a way to, find a way. Let's see, paragraph or section six, paragraph E. I believe there are some technical errors that need to be corrected. In the second sentence, where this shall not be considered and expansion, I believe that should.
Should be and, I've already fixed it.
Okay, there should be a comma after the word but, I believe. And in the last sentence, required to meet and placement should be replacement and hyper quarters. I didn't realize until it was talked about up here, this debate, because I read this on my phone, which is difficult, that there was actually two applications, I read it as one or two ordinances, so. Tried to collect my thoughts a little bit. On the second option, it talks about ground-mounted systems being added to the lot coverage calculations. There is no such statement in the letterhead version of it. I didn't know how others felt about that, I'm not sure.
What was the question again?
So, in the second option, it talks about lot coverage calculations, that whatever is ground-mounted solar being added to that. So, for example, I know Pauline can tell you exactly, but let's say suburban farms, you have three acres and lot coverage is ten percent allowed. You can put structures within zoning ordinances covering up to ten percent of that three acres or point three. If you put a ground-mounted solar on it, according to the second option we had for us, if it was a thousand square feet, that adds to the square feet of lot coverage that you're using, so it adds.
So that was, that was what we, they, they wanted it to be that way. This other version, the way we wrote it, it's.
You have like fifty percent of the primary.
Yep, that I have highlighted there. So that's, that's one of the numbers that I wanted us to take a look at tonight, is what, what does that area need to be, if that's the way you wanted to go? We've had other communities, and I think it's one of these two options, that have stated also that the accessory use shall not count towards, you know, if you're, if you're allowed two sheds, and you already have two sheds, and you want to put this in, this doesn't count towards your accessory use allocation. It's, it's different, but that's, I'm happy to see it worded any way you would prefer, if you want it to be added to the maximum percentage, or if you want to restrict the total percentage of area that it's, that it's used towards, but not overall coverage area.
Mark, would you like to see that added, that it should be part of it? I think that's a good point, especially with the large lots. With the large, I'm sorry, with the large lots, what's written here is not going to be an issue. It's the smaller lots that I hear what you just said, and that should actually cause towards their lot coverage.
Can I make a recommendation? Because the whole idea is open space, right? So lot percentage is a key factor, but also the, the use is a major factor, meaning you need so many panels for, for your, your residence. So Michigan state law is, you can't have a garage bigger than sixty percent of your total square footage. If there's a way we can calculate not number of panels, but number of kilowatts or something as the max per lot, based, based on your, your residential consumption or something?
Well, my follow-up question was, is fifty percent of the primary residence enough to generate enough kilowatts to make it viable? And I don't know that, I'm not.
I don't either, yeah.
Energy systems engineer, so I don't know that. I guess I'll, I'll give you an example, in my case personally, not that I'm considering more of these, but I had fourteen acres, suburban farms, I just built a barn as big as square footage as my house.
Yeah.
And it has considerable power draw because of some of the hobby shop things I like to do up there. And would fifty percent, would a, would a mounted fifty percent the size of my hole be enough to power all of that? Or, you know, most of it, and I don't know.
Right, well, and any consideration there is in that, in that instance, if it's not, one, they, they, so there's a couple of ways you can look at it. One, they could ask for a variance for an additional coverage, if it was, let's say, eighty, fifty percent was the number their manufacturer specs came back and said, well, actually, it's going to put you at like fifty-four percent because of your lot size, that would be something that could be looked at through the ZBA. Two, this is kind of taking the, the way it reads, it kind of takes the presumption of it's a and/or, you're either going to have roof-mounted, or you're going to have ground-mounted, but doesn't take into account that it could be both roof and ground-mounted. So you may, you may not be able to make the ground-mounted requirement based on a percentage, but if you can make that total power number or between the combination of both, then you're still going to be okay.
Also, with, with these, we, the aesthetics is the biggest thing, because it's, they're raised, right? We don't want to see solar farms around, right? The biggest thing with a solar system is storage. You need more storage than you really need panels, because you're not going to be, you might, but most, most cases, you don't, you're not using the solar as it's coming in. Therefore, it's, it's going to re-gen throughout the day and stuff, and you'll use a little bit through the storage. So, storage, which is the biggest hazard, in, in my mind, because of the fire potential and stuff. So that's something we probably should also talk about.
To your point, Pauline, about the smaller lots and coverage, fifty percent of the primary structure would suffice at that point, because you have a small lot or a small, you're not going to have a huge primary structure. The caveat there, I think, is commercial. If they want to do it, why not let them do it on a hundred percent of a flat roof that you can't see from the ground and generate as much power as they can for their own use? But there again, we have.
Well, they can on the roof, they can on the roof, because that percent coverage only applies to ground-mounted.
Okay.
I thought the, the roof, one of these had the requirement that it has to be three foot offset from the.
No, it's the can't, the first one says can't go over the eaves.
Yeah, correct.
The second one's on that head, though.
No, the ridge isn't addressed in the second one. First one is five foot above the roof and can't go over the eaves.
I like the fact, though, that we could actually have our businesses be self-sustainable with this, too.
I like the fact, though, that we could actually have our businesses be self sustainable with this, too.
The other statement in the second one that I liked would maybe consider adding to the first one is actually the last, number eleven. On site use of solar energy systems may be installed over a big vehicle parking lot to encourage dual usage of the site. I don't know. There's any weight, I'm not sure what.
They they make it look like a carport.
Yeah, I think that's great. You're already paving it, you're already using it.
Yeah.
How much else with it? Put this over top of it, but does then that not count towards your fifty percent of the structure? I mean, what what benefits does the homeowner get by doing that if we'd like that and encourage them to that? I don't think this states it.
I believe they have a paid parking lot, I think that's a commercial. A homeowner, do they have a paid parking?
My previous owner paid mine.
At least, we should have a paid call in a parking lot instead of a driveway.
I think structurally, that might not fit well into the fabric of the community though.
Okay, that's what I was going to say, too, because at the new library, they could then put solar panels there from their parking. And their parking will not sustain the library.
Right.
Through there, but aesthetically, drag and buy, that's not going to be something.
No, I would, I I would think to maintain the aesthetics out here, if commercial was doing it, you would either want it wall mounted, not facing the primary street as we have it written, or roof mounted. I wouldn't, uh, I I wouldn't vouch for, like, I've seen the Michigan State that it took one of their parking garages top floor, i- is all panel. Uh, it's like being in a carport, really, but I just don't know how that would look out here.
Protect you from hail.
Hey, one hailstorm and your solar cells are toast.
Right.
So really, for me, that, uh, I would just want direction, uh, and the second option, any of those coming straight over to the first option, and the first option where I have things highlighted, aside from the typos. Uh, I've already fixed a few while we've been sitting here. I've got the document open. Are the numbers good here? Fourteen feet. Uh, in our current ordinance, for the A, R, E, S, E, and S F districts, our accessory structures or our buildings, uh, shall not exceed twenty feet in height. I left it at fourteen here. I don't think we want to see, uh, at max peak, twenty foot. Most of them only go up to sixty. Uh, that's about as high as it gets, but, uh, I went with fourteen just because I wanted to make sure that that's, if somebody's putting them in their backyard, at fourteen, you're probably not going to see it.
I definitely wouldn't want to go higher than fourteen feet.
Everyone okay with fourteen feet?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's a number, uh, I'm going to change to back to reflect the ZVA. Um, I'm also going to fix that section about the ground mounted, this, this is the one Pauline and I kind of briefly discussed on. So it's E, uh, section six, I have two sub E. Being an accessory ground mounted solar energy system on a nonconforming user lot shall not be considered an expansion of the nonconformity. They didn't want to be able to prevent a nonconforming structure to not be able to do this. But in this case, Pauline, how how did you phrase the question today?
Well, I've come, I just saw that today, and I'm kind of coming to terms. So a nonconforming lot or a nonconforming structure, there isn't a whole lot they can do. They're going to probably be there forever. So I I've come to terms with that, but a nonconforming use, yeah.
Yeah, so.
That one doesn't say, like, it's like, so we're going to encourage a nonconforming use that should be there, and that one, that one.
So that should, that should be lot structure, that not lot use.
Yeah, lot structure, maybe. I I mean, that's up to the PC, but yeah, the use didn't say, like, and before we go forward, as far as the ZVA, it seems like everybody wants the ZVA, but typically in our ordinance, for each section, it doesn't say, well, if you don't need it, you can be like, like, like. It's just a whole section, so would we just delete number two, just delete that in full? We don't have to even have that in there, just delete that paragraph. Because it's a given if you can't meet the setback, you you will get your appeals, you don't direct them in any other part of your ordinance.
So then what I want to do is I definitely want the dimensional standards. So I could delete yes, A, uh, two, could come out completely, and that B, C, D, and E would stay.
Probably modify six A to read accessory ground mounted solar energy system shall be located in the rear yard.
Yeah.
For nonrequired setback, because now you don't have that second paragraph for it, so there's no need for the first one. It could be just one sentence.
So you're saying take out, uh.
Notice just A and then sub paragraph, uh, one there.
Yeah.
Just make that all a single sentence, A.
Take out as follows.
Yep.
In the first sentence, and shall be located in the second sentence. And then put the two, what remains together as one sentence.
Or I could also just take that I and just make that B and then move everything else down. Because I want to make sure.
But if it is, if P is accessory ground mounted solar energy system shall be located as follows, colon, it should have something that follows it directly related to it, not B, which would be the state.
Okay, I'm on, well, see. Okay. And so then I'll blow out two altogether.
I have a question for you, maybe an example of a nonconforming use. So a house that was built sometime before zoning ordinances, an area that is zoned commercial, so it's a nonconforming use, correct?
Structure. It would be a nonconforming structure if it's a house and they're residing in it. It would be a nonconforming structure, not a use.
It would be, it would be both, because the use would be no longer permitted under the ordinance if it was a commercial district. You can't have a residential use.
Oh, I miss that part.
But then you could also have a nonconforming structure. However, if it's a residential structure in a commercial zone, and it's not being used for residential purpose, but office purpose, then it would be, could be a con- a conforming structure.
Yeah, because that's allowed in the order. If it's, if it's O C one, and it was there prior, they're considered, uh.
Grandfather.
Grandfather, yeah. Correct, until the use ceases or the structure is demolished.
So they still would be eligible, I'm more after uses that, um, I don't know.
That's what I'm trying to do. Why is when.
Let's, let's take.
They have, let's say, a ton of outside storage that's against the ordinance, somehow they're going to start adding the solar panels or they're going to have, oh, they have a bunch of garbage, or or they're running a business that's not legal out of, that's not a legal use. So I'm going, I'm thinking uses, why are we going down this road? But a structure, yeah, they should be able to prove that it's an approved structure.
Yeah, not a, not a condemned one or or failing one.
Yeah, I perceive a nonconforming use to be something that is legal, albeit not conforming, because something changed and its uses continue. Not thinking about illegal uses, those should have been taken care of by a building official or zoning official or something.
Not always, so that's why I'm I'm stuck on the use market. It's like, why are we rewarding use? But the others, I I'm fine with, because you can't change a lot size, you can't change the structure, the person is within there. Not for some, I'll try to say, say, rude detail, but for somebody that's doing a use, yeah, I can't go down there.
Yeah, I guess, I think, not, if it's a nonconforming use done legally, I don't see an issue. Um, like a nonconforming structure saying that's illegal because, because, I don't, I don't know.
Well, if it's a nonconforming, based on the examples, if it's nonconforming, this is coming from a, an engineering background guy. Uh, where I've seen a lot of repurposing of buildings. So if if it's a repurpose and they have to go to the the building official to get the permits, should, whether or not they're doing it behind closed doors because it's all interior, that that'd be the issue. Uh, otherwise, if it's something that's being repurposed, uh, the building official and their team, mechanical engineers, electrical engineers, all that, should be hacking off on on the plans. It's why, uh, there was a lot of talk on the on the sketches that I think Chairman asked. Should these be somewhat professional sketches on the plans? Because if they miss it during the permitting process, then it's on the township for being non- nonconforming. At some point, though, if they catch it, they can petition the owner to fix it, to be back in conforming. Does that still not help, Mark?
It does, I agree, but in those cases.
A few and far from plenty, right?
Then it's got to be a permitted use, so it wouldn't be nonconforming at that point.
If it's new, yeah, if it's new, for sure.
I mean, if it's a repurposed building, if you're going to repurpose it, you've got to get all the permits to re.
Yeah, yeah.
To get the C of O, it's got to be a permitted use. So.
I guess the the homeowner's nonconformance would be if, let's say, you, uh, div one in the cover of darkness, put one in your backyard, nobody sees it, and you install it in inside your barn or whatever, then that's nonconforming.
Right, well, it would be an illegal, it'd be an illegal installation. If a if a permit's required, they don't do it. Township would have recourse to go take it out.
So.
Until the permit.
So that's the difference between illegal versus nonconfor- uh, non.
Nonconforming is when, a nonconforming lot is when you have a lot that does not meet the required lot size standards. So it might be a lot requirement for ten thousand square feet, and you only have eight thousand square feet. That would be a nonconforming lot.
So conformance is based solely on zoning offsets and size?
Correct, so that, so that zoning use, where we have a nonconforming use, is any use that exists as a present time that is a legal use, at which time the zoning changes, and that use is no longer permitted within that district. So that's what we call into grandfathered use. It can stay until it ceases to exist, uh, and once it ceases to exist, it can't come back. And then a structure, again, is any structure, uh, I like to use this example a lot. Uh, you build a house, and at the time you build it, the requirement is a thousand square feet, first floor minimum. Now the ordinance has changed and it requires fifteen hundred square foot, first floor minimum. Uh, now you are a legal nonconforming structure, and therefore you can't expand upon that structure in any way that increases the nonconformity, so you have to, in order to be conforming, you would have to.
I guess to help me and Mark out, and our like minded folks out there in the community, should we have was some kind of clause in here that states the difference between conformity versus illegal?
We do, and we have a nonconforming section of the ordinance.
But one that has the, that differentiates between what.
Yes, what a lot of use and a.
Illegal versus conform, okay.
Yep, yep, we got that. So for me, I think what I've heard tonight, the only thing that's left that I really, you know, was curious about was that fifty percent number. Uh, for, you know, how we basing something off fifty percent of the principal structure for the maximum lot, or for the maximum area that can be for ground mounted systems? Uh, or do you want to define, uh, like you spoke into in the other sample, a, the 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 lot coverage is what it is in the ordinance, and this does count towards your lot coverage, and you cannot exceed your lot coverage under the ordinance. I'm good with either way, as long as it's for ground, for ground mounted systems. Or if you want, I can clean up this ordinance and put both side by side, so you can get them side by side and think on it, until your next meeting.
Do you have, um, a CS engineer contact resource that you could ask what kind of
Yeah.
outputs you can get, and is fifty percent within reason? Uh, because I do like that. I think that's a great way to look at it, that, you know, it doesn't go by lot size, it goes by primary structure, which I think is very reasonable, otherwise you go to the ZVA, but I just don't want to.
I have a couple of companies that I work with that do both solar, residential and industrial utility scale, P A two thirty three work. So I can give them a call and see what they say.
So square footage of the principal building, uh, square footage would include second story? If one existed, square footage would include the walkout basement if one existed.
I would tie that down to.
Footprint?
First floor, yeah.
That I would give your contacts, some additional contacts to think about, because that's a big difference.
Yeah.
Two thousand square foot first floor and the same size second floor and a fully completed basement, that's a thousand, you have five thousand living square feet.
Yeah.
And you can only build a thousand square feet of solar panels on the ground, because that's half of your two thousand square foot first floor.
The reason why I said it that way is because most of our schedules of regulation, uh, when they're talking about footprint, first floor minimum is what they go by, and so if I don't remember what our first floor minimum is right offhand for like the R E district. But I can look it up. So that's, that's typically what it's based upon, is first floor only. But I'm I'm happy to ask that question, to see, to see what their reaction is.
Ms. Pauline Dean, happen to know the smallest parcel we have in the township?
As far as that goes, so it would be.
Like, I guess a homeowner that, uh, the smallest parcel that a homeowner has, it might decide that they ever have solar.
I would have to look it up. If you ask me what the zoning sizes are, yes. An actual smallest.
I guess would it be safe to say, on average, most of them are greater than two, two acres?
No, we have a lot better than one acre or less, especially around the lake, which I would imagine that need, and I hate speaking for groups of people, I would think that they're going to be concerned how much we are going to allow on the ground versus, um, the, um, the rules.
Well, but I think what will come into play there, especially with the lake lots, is most of those lots are nonconforming. You can't, you have no rear side yard setbacks, and your rear yard is the front yard. And they're going to have trouble putting anything on the ground anywhere, because of all the garbage, so.
But I do like that it's restricted, because some of the lots are bigger on the lake, and they can probably do it. And then we're just going to have a lot of complaints coming up. And then, um, as far as if we're only going to do it for individual home, when you start just doing a percentage of your lot, we're opening up to, some people have eighty acres, a hundred acres, if you're going to start doing a percentage.
Yeah, fifty percent of eighty acres, that's a farm.
They're not doing it for their whole area anymore. So I'm kind of like, we're just going to be tiny, maybe it does need to go up. But if we have so much variety in Addison Township, it's hard to pinpoint it on just lot coverage.
So let's, uh, let's, let's, let's use, for example, your S F, S E, suburban estates district. Your minimum first floor requ- Your minimum first floor requirement is one thousand three hundred fifty square feet. I'm sorry, one thousand one hundred square feet. So you could bump that number up a fifty percent, you could bump that up to eighty percent of the, of the required minimum or a hundred percent of the minimum for whatever residential district you're located in. And I do like Pauline's thought, maybe for the lake district, we just limit it to roof mounted all, that you can have in areas where you're able to do ground mounted, great.
That's not what I said.
No, that's what I was saying, based on the conversation that one had, is, is maybe, maybe the lake district, maybe we just want to do roof mounted and that way we don't have to worry about the definition of the front yard being the lake front and the definition of the rear yard being the street front and then having all of those potential ground mounted facing the street.
There are some parcels on the lake that are two plus acres, so it's, it's.
They could do side yard.
Balance, I think, and the smaller ones, as Mark was gonna say, as Mark was saying, they're gonna have a hard time putting too much more out there anyways if we counted as lot coverage. I think that's important to count it as lot coverage. Whereas the, the other group that has the two plus acres are, they're on the lake district as well. So then are we gonna say, no, you can't, you can't even put up fifty percent or seventy-five percent of your square footage?
I, I think if we limit it to, to roof mounted, because again, if we're saying at the beginning of this article, section, that we can't have anything in the front yard, doesn't say anything in the front yard, it doesn't, it says nothing in the required front yard, yeah, the side rear yard are unacceptable, unacceptable. So we took that out, and so we'll go to the Z B A. So if, if, if the front yard, or if the, the front yard as we know it is the street side, but in a lake district it's reversed, then we would have ground mounted, right? And, and the street side, and I don't think we're trying to get to that.
Is it possible to say anything S F and above? So that way that anybody that's owned our one, which is one acre or less, would only be able to do mounted, but the S F would still be okay?
Okay, no, I think we, I think we could do that. So for ground mounted, energy systems, S F.
S, S F being suburban.
It's the minimum lot size is two acres for township definition. And then the other one is the next step down, which is one, minimum of one acre for township definition.
I think our one would still be okay for ground mounted, I think they would be able to do that on one acre.
We seem to be stuck on this.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think, based on the question Mark had you, going back to the engineers with, ask them to also give a recommendation on, on storage, because I, I think that's gonna answer a lot, a lot of people's concerns, because two, three panels.
It could be, it could be storage, but it could be a conversion, so it could be straight conversion into the power system for the house, like an AC DC converter. Or it could be battery storage, like they're doing now for Generac, where it's a battery energy system that's mounted to the wall outside your garage.
Right.
So I can just about that. What we wouldn't allow, what we wouldn't allow is for them to put a pad in their backyard and start stacking up lithium, lithium ion storage. That's, that's only for utility scale.
And I'm happy doing it on the structure, sorry, it's fifty percent or whatever, but it depends on what we start with and what the calculation is, and does it come out big enough or reasonably so, if you will? Because I think that you can get a widely varied result depending on the calculation that you use.
Well, you could, like, there, there's a number, I, I'll talk to, I'll give them a call and see if I can get some answers to that. My other thought was even if, you, you could say one hundred percent of the minimum first floor requirement. So for the S F district, it could just be eleven hundred square feet. That's the amount of space that you are allowed for, e- even if your home is three thousand square feet. The minimum is eleven hundred, that's, that's required, therefore you're alright. Could be eleven hundred and if that's not enough, then look at your ground and roof mounted options and see if there's way. Those panels are so efficient these days, I don't, I think that would be an abundance of panel here.
So Justin, will, these panels, will they, if I wanted to give my solar panels on my pole barn and I do that, is that separate from doing the house?
No, it's, if you own on your whole barn, if you're mounting up to the roof of the pole barn, that's, the, the only coverage that we're talking about here is for ground mounted specific. Ground mounted specific.
Mark, you're afraid, you're afraid that fifty percent will limit somebody who wants to utilize that system and can't because of the size of their house?
It isn't a percentage, I would say, it is, if, if it's the first floor minimum is a thousand square feet or that's what we're gonna start with and fifty percent of that means five hundred square feet of solar array, but the house has three finished floors and it's really four thousand square feet of living space, is that enough?
Right.
So.
The manufacturer will have to spec it. And so like when I, I was gonna get sized for a generator, generator. They came to the house and ran our power loads and said, you need a twenty-one kilowatt diesel generator. So they'll, the manufacturer will be able to spec, if you've got, you know, a thirty-five hundred square foot home, this is your power generation load currently and usage. They'll be able to spec out what that looks like, so I, I can't do that. But what I can do is see if I can talk to some of my contractors to give me some, some previous specs that they've done on a variety of different homes, sizes, to let, that, that I can bring back and share with you to see what we're really working with here as far as the area. The biggest concern that most people had had in these other two examples is they want to make sure that they don't allow an area large enough for somebody to overbuild and, and try to get away with, now they're doing both utility generation and powering their own site. So we wanted to have some sort of limitless mechanism there to prevent somebody, like, like to get the example that was brought up, somebody has ten acres, they only need a thousand square feet to do their house, but all of a sudden they're applying for five acres. And that's, that's just, yeah, that's, people, you give them that inch, they will take it.
And I agree, but in your generator example, let's say the township said you can't have a generator at your house greater than what you need to power the first floor, which is a thousand square feet and that's ten thousand kilowatts.
Right.
But your contractor says you need twenty-one thousand, but we've limited you to the first floor calculation, which is what in essence we're doing with this solar at fifty percent, we only start on the first floor. And that's why I'm asking for some context to try and understand that.
Let me, yeah, let me, let me do some research on that.
We've been, been at this for a while. Is there a aspect we have not spoken of that anyone wants to bring up?
I have one potential loophole to address. I've heard it a few times, manufacturer specs and stuff. Is there anything in here that clearly states that it has to be manufacturers or no homemade?
I will make sure that's in here, but that's, anything that's being submitted for approval has to be manufacturer specification. That's, that's.
Reputal manufacturer or like a manufacturer, like, I can manufacture something?
It would be a license to, yes, a reputable manufacturer. You know, it's like anytime you get a user manual or something like that, we, there's installation spec, specifications. Putting in an H R X system, there's manufacturer specification for installation and setup. We want that same thing to apply here. We're not just gonna let somebody go buy a couple of panels or, you know, find a couple of panels and then slap it up without the manufacturer's specification. It'd be like avoid the warranty and avoid the license of the zoning compliance.
Anything else? So, well, just to sort of summarize real quick, we're going to run with the letterhead version, so you don't have to repeat the information for the non-letterhead version. Going to, oh, I think we can also get rid of that alternative definition of accessory energies, yeah. Yeah, we're going to drop off the extension, extending circumstances about which, which initially called in the planning commission. We're not gonna replace that with Z B A, we're just gonna drop that off and revamp your numbering appropriately. We're gonna add the lot coverage calculation. We're going to figure out non-conforming structure or lot. I don't know about the fifty percent of the square footage of the principal building. I think we're probably gonna have some different language that to look at.
I need to call, I suppose.
And no homemade systems, like my hunting cabin, we'll mention that.
Say, I gotta move to the U P if you want one of those.
Yeah. And then we'll take another stab at the, at the apple next, next time you bring it up. Okay with everyone?
Can we say we're moving that number two?
Yes, Roman numeral two, yeah. Okay. Moving then on to agenda item number three. Mark Smith has been appointed by the township board to be our P C representative on the Z B A. You might recall that in the bylaws discussion, we had a, a meeting or two ago, we were not in compliance with that and we are now, but if we've lost Linda, we'll have to get someone on the township board to be in compliance with the, that part of the bylaw. Next, public forum, I don't see anybody in the audience, but I'll open a public forum at seven oh two. Anyone wishing to address the planning commission may do so. Seeing no takers, we'll close it at seven oh three. Do any, any, does any trustee or have any commissioner's reports?
I haven't attended the Z B A yet. I already met one since the.
Okay. That said, I think we're ready to adjourn, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none? Thank you very much, our next scheduled meeting is August twelfth.